Remember what it was like to be a kid? To explore and play? To roam free all day? In Jamestown, North Carolina, we get out of the grind and escape into the moment. People feel good here. Eat well here. Feel swell here. We go for a ride or an afternoon stroll. We cheer each other on. Here, a treasured history. Meets the energy of a town on the rise. In a place with true heart and soul. And where we have our own special beat. Jamestown, North Carolina, where history and possibility meet.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would Clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Glanville?
Here.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Here.
Mayor Montgomery?
Here.
Councilmember Burgess?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
Here.
The quorum is present.
Thank you. Please stand and pledge allegiance. Ben Arnold, would you lead us for your final council meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Counsel, do we have any changes to the agenda as presented?
Yes, I'd like to add the proclamation declaring June 19th is Juneteenth in the town of Jamestown as the last item under the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Second?
On favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, John Capes.
Good evening, everybody. John Capes, 740 Drive, Jamestown. I just want to call it a couple of things that I've noticed in recent history. Don't worry, it won't be three minutes. Basically, I've noticed time and again from last meeting and meetings past that we consistently have the same people coming up over and over again to either talk down about the council, or the budget, or individuals, or some other aspect of town. And one of the things I just want to make sure keeps getting brought to the surface is that we have a small group of people who consistently seem unhappy with Jamestown. It has often made me ask the question, why are they still here? I don't know. But I felt like it was important to bring it up because as we look at where we're at and where we're going, and the efforts that are being made to try to be both physically responsible and to take care of our town, it's important to point out that the naysayers are actually a very, very small group of people. And while they seem to be the noisiest, they're a very, very small group of people. It's a good town, good people, good employees, a lot of things here that are positives. And I just wanted to bring that up one more time because we don't hear it enough. I don't think the council gets enough thanks. I don't think the town gets enough thanks. And I genuinely believe that there's a lot of effort being made to malign things that don't even need to be maligned. So I wanted to get that out. The other thing I wanted to say was, great job on budget. Thank you, Faith. Thank you, Counsel. That's all I've got.
Thank you, John. Nobody else sign up? Okay, thank you. Ben Arnold, would you meet Councilmember Glanville at the podium, please?
Hello? Face the crowd here. All right, we have a resolution. Now, for those of you who don't know, that Arnold has been our chief representative for Ragged Hill High School on the Town Council this year. He has graduated and has sent to Western. Oh, really? Whereas the youth in our community are a valuable resource, and whereas it is important for our youth to learn about and understand the role of our local government, and whereas Benjamin has volunteered his time to be involved in the process of local government by serving as the Ragged Hill High School representative to the Jamestown Town Council, and whereas Benjamin has demonstrated academic excellence throughout his educational career by completing advanced placement and honors courses, and whereas he has been adopted into the National Beta Club and National Honor Society, competitive and premier organizations established to recognize outstanding students, and whereas he has shown his ability to expertly balance a challenging academic course while also dedicating his time participating in the Eagle Scouts, the book club, the gaming club, the Ragged Hill Choir, and through the Service Center, high school representative. And whereas it is apparent that Benjamin is a very hardworking individual that is deeply committed to his community and will be successful in his future endeavors. Now, therefore, in this resolve, I, Councilmember Glanville, on behalf of the mayor and the Town Council, do hereby express our deep appreciation to Benjamin Arnold for his dedication of his time and talents to our community and who thanks Benjamin for our best wishes for his academic career and pursuit of his goals in life. He has further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be spread on the pages of the official minutes of the town of Jamestown to stand as a tribute to the service of Benjamin
Thank you, Ben. Daniel McDaniel, would you meet Councilmember Rayburn at the podium?
So whereas Daniel has served the Town of Jamestown's Parks and Recreation Committee since May 2019, and has served as Vice Chair of the Committee since March 2023, and whereas has worked on the Jamestown Park as a land to provide the town with opportunities to receive grant money to make recreational areas in Jamestown more enjoyable for everyone in the community, and whereas he supports his town staff in creating the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund and exceptional people for parks and parks, both of which were awarded to the town, and whereas citizens of Jamestown have benefited from his dedication to improving and creating areas in which they have participated in recreational activities for their family concerns, and whereas his service has been a million and year, and he has contributed to the success of communities and efforts in the development of the quality of life of many of his fellow citizens, and whereas he has engaged in active research and has announced first citizens academy. And whereas through his steadfast commitment to understanding and understanding of local government, he has garnered first public civic leaders and a heartfelt initiation of Towns members in the community. Therefore, I, Councilmember Rayburn, on behalf of Mayor and the Town Council, do hereby express our deep appreciation to Daniel McDaniel for his two years of service and do extend
And Deborah, if you'll meet me at the podium.
Please, Deborah Mullis began her work with the Town of Jamestown through the Lead for North Carolina Fellowship Program. And whereas the Lead for North Carolina Fellowship is a premier local governmental fellowship for recent college graduates that connects promising young leaders with local governments. And whereas Deborah was selected by the Town of Jamestown to develop and implement the town's inaugural Citizens Academy program. And whereas the Town of Jamestown recognizes the importance of fostering civic engagement and transparency through educational initiatives such as the Citizens Academy. And whereas Mullis possesses an extensive skill set and has proven to be extraordinarily impressive by creating a program that is not only engaging and informative, but also creative, effectively communicating broad and complex topics in a clear and comprehensive manner. And whereas she has become an integral part of the Town of Jamestown staff, consistently demonstrating a strong work ethic and a willingness to assist with any task presented to her. And whereas her ability to work independently on difficult projects is a testament to her internal drive for success and her passion for public service and citizen engagement. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Montgomery, on behalf of the Council of the Town of Jamestown, do hereby recognize and commend Rebecca Deborah for outstanding service and leadership in the creation and successful implementation of the Citizens Academy.
Thank you.
So we also have some last graduates that we want to recognize from the Citizens Academy. So first, Donald Dale, come up here. And Dan McDaniel. And Donald McDaniel, we got our three D's.
Counselmember Wolf, I believe you had someone you wanted to recognize in the community corner.
Yes. Mitchell, are you here? And Mitchell, please. Pronounce your last name for me.
Burrows.
Burrows? Okay. And Mitchell lives in Jamestown, and he has received his rank of Eagle Scout, and for his project, he constructed two large bulletin boards for our Jamestown library, which they very much needed. So we want to thank you for doing such great things in your life and for the Town of Jamestown.
Thank you.
Matthew, do you have a manager's report for us?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. I want to thank Deborah Mullis for her leadership and her hard work during this past year with us as a Lead for North Carolina Fellow. It's really difficult for me to believe that a year has gone by. She's done some tremendous work here for the town, beginning with spearheading the Citizens Academy, our recent audio series, and she's contributed greatly to the Finance Department during her time with us. And so we are deeply grateful for her thoughtful contributions to the community and her efforts to promote citizen engagement. So thank you very much to Deborah. While the filing period for the 2025 municipal elections will be managed by the Guilford County Board of Elections, it's not too early to reflect on the importance of public services in our community. As our Citizens Academy participants learned, serving on the Town Council is an opportunity to be directly involved in the decisions that impact the daily lives of our residents, from land use and infrastructure to parks, safety, and fiscal stewardship. Council members bring their unique perspectives to the table and help guide the long-term vision of the town. If you are passionate about making a difference and ensuring that Jamestown continues to grow with care and character, we would encourage you to consider running for office. The Council candidacy filing begins on July 7th at 8:00 a.m. at the Board of Elections and closes on July 18th at 12:00 noon. I'd like to take a moment to congratulate Marcy Newton, our head golf pro at the Jamestown Park Golf Course. She earned her PGA Class A1 Professional Certification that does not have any relation to steak sauce. Because I had to ask. The process to earn the certification was indeed a big challenge. Marcy tackled that head-on. And to achieve the credential, Marcy had to complete the PGA Professional Golf Management Program and pass a lengthy exam. It's a prestigious credential that is recognized worldwide and specifically highlights her role as the head golf professional and as she is responsible for the management, merchandising, and lessons at the golf course. Recently, three other employees were recently recognized for their contributions to the town through our employee recognition program. Justin King, our golf mechanic, was recognized for his persistence in seeking out a lower-cost solution to finding parts for our equipment. Justin sourced a new vendor for our mower reels and saved the town over $8,000. Philip Cooper and our Public Services Department suggested a program change which would allow our employees to voluntarily share sick leave with those in need. And finally, Scott Coakley, our Parks Director, was recognized for his tenacity in always seeking out ways to improve operations while saving money. Scott has saved tens of thousands of dollars just in the past year by seeking out new suppliers, negotiating contracts, and generally looking out for the town. We applaud all of our employees for their frugality and for their passion to make Jamestown excellent for our citizens and their fellow employees alike. Speaking of Scott, Scott is also in the process of planning a grand opening for the new accessible playground, natural play area, and basketball courts. We would just ask you to keep looking at our social media and for those announcements. And we'll let make those here as well. I'd like to recognize Jason Pagram in our Public Services Department for his leadership in completing our biannual street resurfacing project. The project was a contract that came in just under $550,000, and that included over 2,400 tons of asphalt resurfacing, 13,500 square yards of milling, trust me, that's a lot, 50 structures adjusted up to grade, those are like manholes and water valves, and 600 square yards of pavement patching. The town was able to resurface just over 1.8 miles of roadway, and in past years, we've only been able to do around 1 to 1.3 miles of paving. And the good news is that with the recent funding increases due to motor vehicle fees, we're able to continue to invest in our infrastructure, protect our assets, and complete yet another additional half mile of resurfacing. So I think I did my math right, it's about 67% increase in resurfacing. The Public Services Department, which you may not be aware of, Paul has done a pavement condition study that was last completed in 2022, which guides paving projects. That report showed us being quite a bit behind in our paving schedules, and so this will help us put a dent in that. We anticipate doing another pavement condition study in fiscal year 26, '27, which is not this upcoming one, but the next one, just prior to our next paving cycle. The town's also in the process of selecting a design-build solution. We have awarded that contract, but over the coming months, we're going to be doing some more, bringing more information to the public. We're working with Chief Carson on a possible open house during National Night Out in August, which would allow our citizens to tour the station, and this represents outcome 5C in our strategic plan. Town offices are closed on Friday, July 4th, but there will be a Music in the Park event that evening. There are no changes to our solid waste schedule, however. And speaking of Music in the Park, we continue with that on July 4th at 6:00 p.m. in Rennmiller Park, featuring the Special Occasion Band. So they'll be bringing the Beach Music Sound back to Jamestown. They've always been a big hit, and we anticipate the same. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them at this time.
We don't know when the playground will be open yet.
I don't know yet. He's anticipating within the next two to three weeks, we'll be finalizing the pouring of the rubber pour-in-play surface, and once that's done, they're going to do a few punch items, punch list items to get that fixed up. His intent is to open up the basketball courts, the natural play area, and the new playground, accessible playground, while we're continuing to work on the other sections of the park. We'll have those closed, but those will be open for people to use.
Yeah, right. My grandchildren keep asking when.
It's a shining thing that's out there.
I know, yes.
People see when they drive by, it looks really cool.
I wonder, is there any way we can post the filing period on the website? I know that for the election, I know the town, of course, is not responsible for that, but I think it's important for the public to know when the filing period is and then for them to be aware there will be a be decibel election in November.
Yep. No problem. Well, that'll be under the Town's News in the page, yes.
That would be good.
We can do that, no problem.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew. Ben, do you have anything to add for your last meeting?
We graduated June 11th. I don't know how long ago that was. My sense of time has been out of cahoots since. The day before that, we had our senior sunset or carnival, which was like one last big party where our principal said, and I quote, "Leave so I can go home," because we were there pretty late. And other than that, yeah, it's been a good school year. Thank you all for giving me this opportunity to participate.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, do we have any committee reports?
Yeah.
Start us off.
Well, we had a part meeting on June the 11th, and just as we're doing, we have been through their budget process and we approved the budget for their next fiscal year. I had a TAC meeting this morning, and it was actually one of the members, we went to their council chambers in Lexington, and I don't know if you've been there, but it was really cool. It was the old Lexington Telephone Building, and they refurbished it for their governmental offices and the council chambers. It's really very nice. But also after the meeting, we toured their depot district, and they have been doing just, it's incredible what's going on down there. Of course, it's been with Davidson County, Lexington, North Carolina Railroad, Southern Railroad, DOT. This is something that has been in the works for 15 years, but it's coming to be. If you get a chance, you should go there. Already there's parts of it open, and the developer, I want to get his name, I wish he could do Oakdale, but the city had purchased those buildings. It was old Lexington furniture buildings years ago, so there's the big difference, you know. But if you get a chance, it's just awesome, it's beautiful. And that was all that I had.
Thank you. Did you have any?
The Planning Board did not meet in June. We are expected to meet on July the 14th. But I did want to acknowledge what a great time, oh, great time, what a great thing that Jose did on the North Carolina Railroad Lunch and Learn. That was really great. And I also suggest that going forward, maybe when school starts up again, that we reach back out and see if they can go out to the schools and do, you know, some type of a program, really safety concerns, since we're right here at the railroad. I thought that was a great thing that we should do, so it was a great, great program.
Thank you. Anything? What's in that school?
Well, as Ben has told us, they have graduated and moved on, our seniors have. But I had the honor of going to the 2025 Student Leadership Award Ceremony, which was for the High Point Schools partnership. So this was only High Point, and this is the first year that Jamestown was included with, in that, we were kind of, you know, previously just, we weren't in the Greensboro ones, we weren't in the High Point, so we were just kind of, and we were, our students were going unrecognized. So this was the first year, and from Ragsdale, Kailani Daniel, and from GTCC Middle College, Amore Maber, Mabeni, were selected as the student leadership award recipients. So it was very exciting to get to go see them receive their awards, and I also got to meet Christina Joyner-Green, who our school is named for right down the road. So that was also lovely. So she was, she was a, she was singing the praises of Jamestown schools and was very glad that we were finally included. So, yeah.
She was a Gardens counselor when I was at.
Was she?
Yes.
She's still, she's still at it, let me tell you what. She stood right up and said it was about time that Jamestown got included, so.
I can see that. I went to a PTRC meeting, and like Martha said, it was budget season, so that's how we handled it there. Is Captain Howell here or a representative? Are you going to give us our monthly report?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deputy Yule, and I'm currently assigned to District 3, Knight, Jamestown car. So the May 2025 stats, we've had a total of 15 reports, one being shoplifting from the sheets, which was closed by arrest, which means we got the suspect. Three frauds, six calls for service, mostly from the schools, three calls for service, reports of documentation, one traffic accident on private property, and one drug offense. We had a total of 74 calls for service, 95 of those being self-initiated, with the average response time of eight minutes, and an average reaction time of five minutes and 31 seconds. And just a reminder for everyone, we all know that students are out of school, so please, 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 take all your valuables out of your car, make sure your cars are locked, whether it's purses, firearms, anything of value, because normally around this time during the summer, we have increased breaking and enterings in people's vehicles. during the summer, we have increased breaking and enterings in people's vehicles all over the county, so. And just be aware of fraud calls and emails, because we're getting a lot of those now, so if anybody's asking you for money as far as like emails or for your account, just don't do it, just give us a call if you're, you know, ever hesitant about that, and that's pretty much it.
Well, I'll have to tell a little story about the Sheriff's Department, my neighbor, and of course, they have the cameras, and her husband has the camera at work, so they know what's going on, and she was starting to pull in, the neighborhood lives in, original Forestale, and called me and said, "There's a, there's a van in my driveway, I don't know who it is, and someone's walking around to the back of my house." So I said, "Well, I'm gonna go over there and see who it is."
911.
Well, no, it was true. But the point is, by the time she pulled in, and the man came back around, he was at the wrong address, I mean, she had already called the deputy, but, so I went back home, but before she got everything out of her car, the deputy was there.
Oh, yeah.
And of course, it was a false call, you know, but they were there minutes. It was a lot less than eight minutes.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
I have a quick question for you. I posted the speed limit sign thingy on Guilford Road, but it was only there for like less than a week. Do you have any idea what happened to that?
So, we normally don't keep it up for a long time. That way, we can like deter the speeders, but if you want them, if you want it back up, we can get it back up there.
That would not hurt anything.
We got, I think all of us got a lot of really positive feedback.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, yeah, we can definitely get it back up there.
Well, Matt, excuse me for just a minute, what's the difference, and we kept talking to DOT about some type of digital, this is your speed sign, but then the Sheriff's Department had one they put up right away, what was the difference in the long take of what we're going to have to do with DOT?
So, I know that theirs is temporary, number one. Number two, Paul's been working on that project, so I may just ask Paul to respond.
Yeah.
Put you on the, you want to come up, come up to the, that way the folks listening at home can hear you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It requires an encroachment agreement and approval by NC DOT to actually put one in the ground, because they could not let us put one on the speed limit sign like you typically see.
Yeah.
So we're working on that process with them.
I see, okay. I'll answer that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Jose, you have a public hearing to present to us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This evening, we will be holding two related public hearings, one for rezoning request and one for annexation petition. These decisions are contingent upon one another. So after my presentation as part of staff and applicant's presentation, we ask members of the public wishing to speak about the rezoning case, do so during the rezoning hearing. During the annexation hearing, we ask comments be limited to any additional new information that has not already been shared in the interest of time. So with that said, I'll start my staff presentation for the rezoning request. So we have a rezoning request, case number 2025-01. The location is 5125R1 at Water Drive, which is west of Pine Tuck Drive, also identified as parcel number 155994. It is 18.02 acres approximately, and is one piece of property. The zoning request is a proposory zoning from agricultural, AG, to conditional zoning, single-family residential, ZC, SFR. Before you, you see aerial imagery of the property, bounded in red. Like I said, it is west of Pine Tuck Drive, which connects to Adams Farm Parkway. Some land use facts about the property. The current use of the property is vacant, it is a wooded lot. It is bordered by agricultural zoning to the north, single-family residential to the south and east, and to the west, conditional zoning plan unit development, CDPUD, which is the Dr. Horton Development. The open space and tree conservation requirements are required open space 1.802 acres approximately, which is 10% open space requirement. The required tree conservation area is 6%, which amounts to 1.08 acres approximately. The streets are, that have access to the site is Pine Tuck Drive, which is a public NC DOT street. Water and sewer, water is accessible right at the end of Pine Tuck Drive for the site. Sewer is also accessible from two options, north and southwest of the property. The site is also in the lower Random and Lake general watershed area. Again, the request is agricultural to conditional zoning, single-family residential. The requested zoning, single-family residential, is described as follows. Provides for the completion of existing residential neighborhoods and the development of new residential neighborhoods in a pattern that encourages the wise use of land. Allowed building lot types in the single-family district are detached house and civic building. Permitted uses are restricted to single-family homes and their accessory uses, a limited number of related uses that serve the residential neighborhoods and civic uses. Neighborhoods in this district are the dominant land use in Jamestown and are a major element in defining the character of the community. Standards for the single-family residential district ensure that new development maintains the character of the community. The single-family residential district permits completion and conformity of conventional residential subdivisions already existing and on approved sketch plan form by the Town of Jamestown prior to the effective date of these regulations. For new subdivisions, the town encourages the clustering of development and protection of open space through the use of cluster development overlay district. Again, this is a conditional zoning request, so there are conditions. The conditions are as follows. Number one, maximum number of single-family units shall be limited to 68. I want to highlight, this is a change from the original request of 73 lots, and the applicant will cover that a little bit more. Use shall be limited to single-family residential. Proposed rear setback shall be 15 feet. Minimum lot size shall be 4,000 square feet. Impervious surface coverage shall conform to the Random and Watershed requirements and shall not be subject to any building coverage limitations per lot. All interior streets shall be provided in conformance with Town of Jamestown standards, with a minimum centerline radius of 50 feet allowed at offset bulbs, and minimum centerline radius of 200 feet entering the site on Pine Tuck Drive. And last but not least, parking off the public street will be allowed at the US Postal Cluster Box Unit, CBU, if required, which is required of all single-family subdivisions at this Here before you is the updated concept plan that the applicant updated after the Planning Board meeting. The Planning Board did recommend for approval, but the applicant took it upon themselves to try to address some of the comments presented at Planning Board, and again, I'll give them some time to elaborate on that, but I just want to highlight a couple of things. There was a lot reduction from 73 to 68, and there were comments regarding the lots adjacent to Fox Hollow being too small, with the reduction of those lots, he made them larger. And then there were comments on the need for open space, an active open space, so they also added a little public park area that you see on the top corner to address some of those comments. Again, I'll give the applicant some opportunity to discuss some of those changes. Future land use. So again, all of our decisions are contingent on our comprehensive plan envisioned Jamestown adopted in 2021, and the land use, as you see in the map on the right, is circled red. It is designated suburban residential. The suburban residential land use classification is the most prevalent of the future land use classifications applied on the future land use map, encompassing the majority of the planned residential neighborhoods in the community outside of the town's traditional core area. Although primarily developed in larger single-family residential, this land use classification is also intended to accommodate lower intensity attached residential development in the same context, along with low intensity civic uses such as churches. Where undeveloped land is included in the classification, it is intended to be developed in a manner similar to adjacent suburban residential development. Our comprehensive plan also has guiding principles 13. I want to reiterate, no development is going to meet all principles. Our comprehensive plan covers a lot of areas, residential, commercial, parks, and open space, so these are just a few of the guiding principles that we felt that this development met. Guiding principle number one, Jamestown will actively facilitate high-quality growth that is both compatible with the town's traditional development pattern and innovative in how it meets its need for our diverse and dynamic community. Guiding principle number two, as the strength of our community is directly tied to the long-term success of our neighborhoods, we look forward, we will work diligently to promote and maintain the quality of life and aesthetic standards that our residents expect in Jamestown. And guiding principle number 10, Jamestown is a welcoming and inclusive community that values the benefits of diversity in all aspects of town and its residents. The Technical Review Committee met on March 27, 2025, to review the original concept plan of the subdivision. Farmer, marshal, and public services staff were present at the meeting, and it was determined that sewer access to the north of the site will be most effective since the sewer line in East Bend were already located on the property, and there were no major concerns expressed regarding fire access in terms of the development. Just want to provide a quick summary on the Planning Board decision. The Planning Board reviewed the rezoning request during their regular meeting on April 14, 2025. The board voted 6 to 2 in favor of recommending approval to the Town Council, two members opposed. Adopted the following consistency statement, which I will just read the section in red, which is kind of the meat and bones of the consistency statement. The Planning Board further finds that the proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan because the proposed single-family development aligns with the suburban residential future land use designation and guiding principles 1, 2, and 10 of the adopted comprehensive plan. The Planning Board further finds that the proposed zoning amendment is reasonable because the zoning is consistent with the goals and policies of the Town Comprehensive Plan, promotes orderly transition of land use in the area, and supports development of compatible housing types. And the Planning Board further finds that the proposed zoning amendment is in the public interest because it will facilitate the development of single-family housing that meets current and future community needs, supports neighborhood stability, and maintains the character of adjacent residential areas. So next steps. So the applicant is here, Jeff Gurnier with True Homes, to provide a presentation regarding their request and their proposed development. And again, I'd just like to reiterate, the public hearing is for the rezoning and annexation, and they are contingent on each other. So the council is recommended to discuss both the rezoning and the annexation before voting to continue, adopt, or deny. Are there any questions for staff before I turn it over to...
I would just like to ask about the water and sewer. I had asked you this before, but just wanted to make sure that the town has the capacity to service this, as well as in maintain capacity, the service of other undeveloped areas inside the city limits of Jamestown that we currently have, because there's several parcels.
Gotcha. That wasn't discussed, and I don't want to mean to put you on the spot, but you didn't feel like that was a concern?
We do have water and sewer capacity. I mean, we don't know what the future holds with all of our land, but, you know, we're in good shape with our capacities at this time. We don't see any issue at all.
I just want to be sure that what we already have inside the city limits, we can service at some future time, than annexing other parcels, and that we can service it with our garbage and recycling and yard waste and the law and the fire, all that we have to, the service provided when we annex something.
Yes, the sanitation components, we feel comfortable with. I couldn't speak to fire and sheriff services, but the public services, we feel good about the project.
Okay, that's what...
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. All right. Any other questions for staff?
I think I read something that said that there would be no traffic, and I kind of wanted to question that, because any time you have growth, you got traffic.
Who made that comment regarding no traffic?
Saw something in the packet saying that there would be limited traffic.
It was on the application, application.
Gotcha. Traffic is a concern that was expressed from community members that joined the meeting, and I think that's maybe one of the reasons why there was a lot reduction. Just to address some of those comments, it's going to come up as part of the development. There is going to be some traffic, of course, yeah.
Yeah, that's what concerned me when I saw it on here, it's like, there's gotta be.
I have a question that's not necessarily, I mean, it's related, but not. So the, because this development would go, you'd go basically through Adams Farm, which is Greensboro, to get to what potentially would be Jamestown, and I don't know if Jose will be able to answer this, but like for fire and sheriff, like, they're able to keep track of like, we're going through a different jurisdiction to, so what I'm thinking is like, there's no like, well, no, we don't, we don't service that, no, no, you service it, no, we don't, you, how does that get mitigated?
I don't...
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but, and I do want to add, if I didn't mention it before, Fox Hollow is within our exoterritorial jurisdiction already, so we do have zoning jurisdiction over the area. This would just be extending our limits to that particular parcel. Any other questions?
Sheriff's Department and Pine Croft-Sedgefield would cover all of these residents in that area. It's not like Greensboro, High Point has jurisdiction there.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions before I turn it over to Jeff?
I might have some questions for the applicant, yeah.
Okay, awesome. All right, Jeff.
All right, thank you. Can you have, I'll turn on the... No, no. Is it? I'm technologically challenged, so my name's Jeff Gurnier, I'm with True Homes. Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity to hopefully answer your questions and present this case. I live at 5313 Wayne Road, which, as the crow flies, is about a mile and a quarter from this site. As Jose said, you know, we responded to some issues raised at the Planning Board by, is it going automatically? These lots we made wider, 10-foot wider than the bounce lots, thus reducing the density from 73 to 68 lots. We also added a park area that'll have benches and at least one shade structure. We haven't programmed that yet, but that's typically what we do when we offer that. The site is basically, the density is 3.8 homes per acre with 31% open space, 55-plus percent of the open space will be undisturbed. As you can see, well, we can't quite see the whole thing. It's, I believe it's 4.6 homes per acre in the Williamsboro Commons, 2.9 homes per acre in Fox Hollow, and we're at 3.8 homes. So we're within the range of density in the southern portion of Adams Farm. The existing homes that we back up to have extensive tree buffering already, and our homes, the lots backing up to there are about 115 feet deep, which will have the back of those homes being within 30, no more than 30, no closer than 35 feet, most of them will probably be about 55 feet from the back rear property line. Here's some images of the type of homes that we'll be building. I don't have any slides of the one-story product, but we do have an extensive portfolio that includes ranch homes as well. You know, here's an image of a streetscape in a community that we've built. One of the other things that separates us from a lot of the competition and the price points that we offer, we're targeting a more affordable price range in the first-time and first-time move-up category, is that we offer a lot of choices to our customers. We have a 4,000-square-foot design center staffed with design consultants, and we prefer to sell pre-sales as opposed to what our competition sells, which is spec homes, where they make the choices. Our clients get a wide variety of choices, kind of a good, good, better, best selection in each category. Our standard features are going to include granite countertops and upgraded cabinets and all the homes that we offer. And, let's see, we recently completed a neighborhood in High Point called Boulding Branch, not too far from Jamestown, and these are some of the projects that, in my 35-year career in home building, I've been associated with. Bentley Park, the Metis at Jamestown, the northern portion of Adams Farm, we built a large majority of the homes there, Jamestown Oaks, Riverwalk, and Riverwalk Crossing are all projects that I've personally been associated with. We held a neighborhood meeting on March 26. We sent out over 100 invitations. We had one neighbor visit the site, he happened to be the president of the HOA of Fox Hollow. He had a few questions, we answered them as far as price point, the price range per square foot, and I shared with him the images of the types of homes that we will build. A little bit about True Homes. We're a privately owned home building company. The company started in 2008... The company started in 2008, which was not a great time to be in.
Yeah.
And, you know, we built, the company was built, you know, by, on relationships, relationships with developers, helping them out of the lot inventory they had, helping, working with banks to help them out of the foreclosed inventory they had. And over time, you know, the company grew, was in Charlotte to begin with. The second market we came to was the Triad. The third market was Raleigh. The fourth was Wilmington, and we're also down in Charleston. So we're just in the North and South Carolina, basically three hours from our corporate headquarters, so our owners can come visit us whenever they want, unannounced. We've gotten a lot of national awards for the quality of workplace that we offer, for our associates, the quality of homes that we build. We were named the, we received the National Housing Quality Gold Award from the National Association of Home Builders a few years ago, and the following year, we were named Professional Builder of the Year by Pro Builder Magazine. What sets us apart also is the industry-leading customer satisfaction ratings that we get. There's a firm dedicated to surveying clients of new home builders, and the, you know, the category is this willingness to refer. And 95% or more of our clients are willing to refer us to their friends and family and their neighbors as a builder of choice. Another thing that sets us apart is our true foundation. A percentage of our profits every year go to the foundation, which allows us to partner with community charities to help improve their facilities by basically donating a home that they can, that we build on the property they own, or they source a lot for us to build on. Those are group homes to, you know, for battered women, pregnant teenagers, you know, veterans, homeless veterans, that sort of thing. Some of the communities, the companies or the charities we've worked with, Community Link, I can't read them, Hope Center, Next Step Ministries, we just completed a home for Sea Lights Ministry over in Winston-Salem, and we're having a grand opening there in a couple of months. We also have these local hero homes projects that we do, and we do a lot of affordable housing. In Winston-Salem, we delivered 31 homes targeting 80% area-meeting-income families. We worked with the city of Winston-Salem on some of the lots that they own. We bought them at Tax Valley with our partners, some of our development partners. We delivered those homes over at, near NCA&amp;T. We've delivered a dozen homes targeting, you know, they're deeply discounted with a lot of funding from our lenders for down payment assistance. And at the Willow Oaks area, we provided homes for firefighters, teachers, first responders, a number of people that want, work in the area and want to live there but can't afford to. So we work within those communities to help them make that possible. I'm trying to think. Oh, we also participate with NCA&amp;T. We sponsored the student chapter of the National Association of Home Builders. We offer programs, let me get back to it, to encourage students to be, you know, pursue residential construction management as opposed to commercial. And we also mentor, I personally mentored the student competition team for five years to participate in the national competition that the NHB sponsors for them. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I do. So you mentioned, so 68 homes, and you mentioned that you have the two stories that you showed and some ranch models.
Yes.
Do you know kind of how many of each one-story and multi-story?
Because we sell pre-sales, we let our clients determine the type of home they want.
Okay.
Yeah, and we offer a wide variety of plans. I mean, some builders will have a portfolio of six plans, six or seven plans in the neighborhood. We'll have over 25 plans that people can choose from.
Okay. And with some of the one-story ones, you know, we have a community where we have a lot of seniors in our area who are looking to downsize into, you know.
I'm in that category.
So, so some of these, since you have, you know, so many different types of plans, are some of them accessible or age and place-friendly, would you say?
Yeah, the ranch ones, and if we need to modify for wheelchair-wood accommodations, we certainly can handle that. We do a lot of that.
And one other, this is kind of, but the sign that you had on the little map, there's a sign, is that just kind of a placeholder, or is that?
The preserve at Adams Farm, that sign, that's kind of what we would do as an entrance monument there, yes. And that's what, you know, we've decided to name the neighborhood.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Did you say HOA or no HOA?
There will be an HOA, you know, basically to govern, to make sure neighbors take care of their property correctly and to maintain the stormwater ponds that are going to be required there. You know, that's a burden on an HOA. That's kind of what drives the density requirement. You know, those ponds need to be inspected monthly, maintained annually, certified by an engineer every year to make sure they're functioning as intended to protect the watershed.
I was going to ask that, what, is it two ponds, two detention ponds?
Yes, ma'am.
That will service the stormwater runoff?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yeah, yeah, there's, kind of in the center of the site, it kind of falls off either both directions, so two ponds are necessary.
And now, pine tuck, it'll be extended.
Yeah.
And that's sort of like, it's not a cul-de-sac, it's a circle, so to speak. But those bulbs are, they of course are, you've had the fire chief look, they're sufficient for the fire truck to go through that.
Yes.
And that road will be dedicated, it'll be a Jamestown road?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Well, I just want to take a minute and say, I listened to the planning board meeting online, and I was delighted to see a developer willingly decrease the density, number of units, because that was going to be my first question. Of course, I'd like to see it be more, but to see you take that initiative on your own, I was delighted to see that, and that the larger lots will be on the side that adjoins the, you know, the current existing neighborhood. And when you say a minimum 4,000 square feet, that's just some lots, it's not all. So you'll have a mixture, a variety of smaller to larger lots.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I also just had to say, although this is something that we as a council cannot use to determine whether the land use is appropriate or not, I was very impressed that your company is privately owned and it is a local company. It's not a national home builder that has to hear to their stockholders. And you're taking pride and getting involved in the community with these things you have built for, like you said, domestic violence and veterans and that low-interest loan program to help people actually become homebuyers, which that provides some of that generational wealth we hear and can help them to actually get into that spot. So I did, but we can consider that as a factor, but I do think it's commendable. And also, I like the fact that you have the pre-sale homes more than the spec homes, and that does make it a custom for people if they can get in on that. But where is your design center located?
It's in Kernersville, kind of a central location.
Yeah.
You know, it takes me, it's probably not more than 15, 18 minutes from here, basically, to get there.
Yeah. And then, of course, what Pam had talked about, the traffic, of course, I've ridden, I'm sure we've all ridden out there on Pine Tuck. And I, and coming down Adams Farm, and of course, there's parking on either side of the street, which there is in Jamestown, but Jamestown roads, I believe, are standards are maybe a little wider than what is there, it looks like to me. But I'm sure there is a problem when a school bus comes through there and, but the good thing is that it's not a, 63 homes that you're adding in there. And then once you get into the Pine Tuck, I think that will be larger, but I know why people are concerned about on Pine Tuck, although that's a short road. And I mean, anytime you add something, you're going to have additional traffic, but it's to minimize that impact.
I had a question about the homes that, the lots that back up, and I think you addressed it, I just want to make sure I am understanding correctly. The homes that back up to the existing neighborhoods there. So there will be basically a tree buffer so that?
Well, the existing, the existing homes already have a wide swath of tree buffer on their back property line already.
Yeah.
We will be doing some grading in that area, and, you know, chances are, we're not going to be able to leave a lot of trees on the back of our property.
Right.
But, you know, we'll do some plantings and stuff.
Okay.
But I think the existing tree cover there will help minimize that. Plus, our lots shall be lower, you know, we've got to grade that down to tie everything together, so it's not like people living there are going to be looking into rear windows. Our homes will be, you know, quite a bit lower there.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I just wanted to assess, is whether, all of a sudden, people's backs of their homes are exposed to neighbors and such, so. I will say too, and again, to echo what Martha said, I, you know, I know we can't consider it, but being a social worker myself, I, and someone who just generally believes that every person deserves, and every family deserves a good home in a good neighborhood and to be a successful, you know, homeowner, I also appreciate the work that your company's doing.
Well, it's a passion of our ownership that we give back to every community that we operate in, so.
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. We may have more questions for you in a bit, Jeff. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing to anyone who would like to speak for or against this rezoning request. Please come to the podium, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Madam Mayor, Councilman David Steele, 101 Pierce Drive. I didn't know anything about it, but my concern, I've got a couple of businesses where they're at, and there's a rail line, you know, that you're in there. Is that going to have some outlets in there, or is that one way in and out?
It's one way in and out.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned it's a double rail line, and I think you guys know there's getting ready to be a concrete plant put in up there also. So I think you should, you know, nothing, I'm not shooting down, I'm just trying to bring some facts to light, but, you know, a rail accident, one way in and out, especially tankers, chemicals, I'd just like to bring that to your attention and all, so, just for what it's worth, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brad Wright, lived in Fox Hollow at 2400 Adams Farm Parkway. And I would just like to talk about traffic, which you brought up earlier. There's 300 homes that I know of in Fox Hollow right now, two to three cars per house from driving around, you can see, so there's that many automobiles. There is, what you already learned, we talked about, one way in, one way out through, from Mackey Road to Adams Farm Parkway down to Fox Hollow. The issue with the street, and you brought this up, man, the street narrows from Fox Hollow going into Elk Run, which is Greensboro city limits, I believe. So that street narrows from 36 or so feet wide in Fox Hollow, we're fortunate to have that with, but it's down to about 29 feet into Elk Run. And there are cars parked continuously on both sides of that street all times of the day, along with delivery people doing their jobs, mowers and all that. I get it, I mean, you know, business has to happen, but it's a challenge to get through there right now, as it is. My concern and my neighbor's concern is the same thing with all our traffic in Fox Hollow and the addition of this potential new neighborhood. I think it's 68 houses, so we'll, you know, we'll say 140 or more cars, who knows, along with all the other support vehicles and, you know, delivery trucks, et cetera. We also don't have sidewalks in Fox Hollow, so our children, a lot of them, there's a bus stop or two near the Pine Tuck street, a little access to Pine Tuck, so these kids are required to walk to that, that bus stop, and to and from. I don't know if it's elementary and middle school, but it's, you know, it's a lot of kids. And there's concern there about the traffic, and there's children there having to walk on it. In addition to, you know, your regular retired folks walking, people walking their dogs, myself walking a dog, it's, you know, like any other neighborhood. So that's a big concern. Traffic's a big concern. And I also like to add, or ask, a tree line, where we are concerned about the tree line, I think he addressed that, the gentleman from True Homes addressed that a little bit. We're concerned about, we do have a nice sort of buffer there right now as things are, and we're concerned about not being just looking directly into someone's, you know, background, nor that they want to look into ours, I don't think, right? So those are my concerns. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to Jose. Doesn't need a wheelchair. Good evening. My name is Dale Jacks. Thank you for, oh, I'm sorry, 5604 West Lock Court in Fox Hollow. Rebecca, thank you for asking the question, because if we even thought of moving from Fox Hollow to your location, we would want to see the ranch. So when do you expect, or can I look at a website?
True Homes, that, you know, you can find us on, and we've got a wide variety of services.
Okay. So, and another thing I want to bring to, I'm sorry, was it Jeff?
Please, please address the, so that we can hear you on the microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that would be a concern. I just mentioned, I put the two together, that we've seen Rebecca at different functions. One of them is the Ren Park and the veterans, so she's out and about, I don't know, and I'm sorry, I'm going to point to you, but I don't know your name. Pam. Pam, you were there too. So the question I had to Jeff was looking for a residential home, because we do have a two-family, excuse me, two-story house right now, and even though it's kept up and we keep the outside looking nice and everything else like that, we, let's put it this way, I go on Medicare in a couple weeks, so you know how old I am. My husband's already on Medicare. Bottom line is, we would be looking for that residential. The second question or statement is again about Pine Tuck. One of the gentlemen, maybe it was Jose, no, it was my previous, he said 36 to 28 or something like that. Those cars are always there. I mean, you couldn't put a, in my opinion, in my opinion only, I wouldn't see a fire truck getting down there comfortably with those four to six cars that are parked all the time through there. So that's just a, just a thought, and I wonder if the chief of police, chief is going to talk tonight, maybe can address that, but that's up to you. And then the last thing I want to do is, I think you mentioned it, thank you for paving at Fox Hollow. We've lived there, next month, it'll be 27 years, and it's the first time that it has been paved. So I think I'm in those numbers, whoever did mention that earlier. So thank you very much. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Name's Richard Salazar. My address is 230, 2330 Adams Farm Parkway. My name is right here, he just spoke before Brad. And I just wanted to list some concerns, one of them being is traffic. I have an eight-year-old son that I have to walk down the street to drop him off at his bus stop, and there are cars that speed there quite thoroughly throughout the day and night, so I do appreciate that you guys, you know, paved the road, but I personally, I would like to see some speed bumps in the near future. I think that would, I think that would make everybody in the neighborhood that walk their dog and family, just make it feel more safer. And my other concern was the tree buffer, because I do have a wooded area behind my house. Like my neighbor Brad said, like, it would be nice if we did have an extensive buffer. That way, we don't look into the potential new neighbor's yard, so. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Have anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll return to the council for discussion. Discussion. Discussion concerning the...
Well, I don't know, just something that comes to my mind about, about the traffic issue, the existing traffic, and I'm reminded of when we had the rezoning on Harvey Road, and there was the traffic concerns with the DOT road at the school. And we could not, we talked about it extensively, but we couldn't make the contractor correct an existing problem that was DOTs. You remember how we discussed that? So it sort of comes to mind, my same thing with this, is Pine Tuck and Adams Farm, but Pine Tuck is much narrower, it looked like to me. But anyway, that's an existing DOT street, and we can't ask this contractor to obviously widen that road, because it's not his responsibility. But, but the roads that will be within the subdivision will be Jamestown standards, which are, are larger, wider, and I think the sidewalk, Jose, is that right, will be on?
That's it.
Okay.
There will be a sidewalk?
There will be, on both sides, yeah. So, you know, I get the concern, and especially like you say, a, a school bus going down there, but that's not something this contractor made happen. I'm trying to keep all those things in perspective as what, of what we can consider as a yay or a day, a plus or a minus, if that makes sense to you on my logic.
It doesn't. I wanted to add something or ask a question, if Fox Hollow has an HOA, because the things that I'm hearing are things that are existing and need to be dealt with by that subdivision.
Sounds like they do, right?
Oh, they do. I think you said one.
Okay, if they have an HOA, I would suggest concerns be addressed to them.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're valid concerns, but yeah, I agree with the discussion.
I think they're valid, but they're not out.
Yeah. I, you know, am, have been doing a lot of research in the last several years since the Johnson Farm property came to light, and I think the data all shows that we are, there's just a housing shortage everywhere. And I think I've brought my thoughts to the council before, that what I really feel like is missing is single-family homes, because, you know, there's a real push for multifamily. We're consistently told that's what buyers want, could, it could be, but I also firmly believe that's what buyers want, because that's all buyers are being offered. And so I'm pleased that this is a family, a single-family home community.
Yes, I agree, yeah.
So I'm pleased to see that. My biggest concern is making sure the neighbors who are currently there feel well taken care of, and that they have the buffer and such, because, you know, I also don't think that, I, we want to welcome new Jamestown residents and welcome them to our town, but we also don't want to do it at the expense of people who already live here, so. So I feel like if, if the buffer and some of the, the concerns, like we said, you know, traffic may be out of our purview or the builder's purview, but I think then if, if we can strike that balance, I think it, it sounds good to me.
Yeah, I think you have to say it's an appropriate land use because it's a single-family residential, a budding single-family residential.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's agreeable, some of it with our comprehensive plan, but for me, I'm just going to be honest with you, I, I'm just not into overlapping developments. I'm just totally focused on Johnson Farm right now. And, you know, I, it just concerns me that we're just, it's so much growth at one time in the town that we'd have to focus on. And for me, I mean, I like the, I like the fact that it is a smaller community, I, I do like that. I'm just not one for a, a lot of building going on at one time in a small town. That's just my personal opinion. But, I mean, but I do know that according to the comprehensive plan, like Jose said, it's, I mean, there's, it's, there's, you know, not agreeable with everything, but...
Oh, yeah.
But according to the comprehensive plan, I mean, it does meet, you know.
Jamestown has never gone out and seek developers. I think we would rather not, but when they come to you, you have an obligation, a responsibility to, to make that decision for them. And the landowner has the right, as we said before.
Yeah, well, that's not my argument. That's, that's, yeah, I totally understand that. I'm just saying, for me, and this is my opinion, you know, I'm focusing on Johnson Farms, you know, that's just how, that's my, you know, my feeling.
Yeah. Wish things would slow down.
Yeah, some of the research I've done on this is, you know, you mentioned the company started in 2008, and, and honestly, it sounds like that we're still trying to recover our housing market from the 2008 bubble bursting there, and, and with the, I know we, we have some projects coming soon to the area, particularly around the airport, and bringing new jobs and such, and so. I, I, Pam and I totally agree, like, it is a lot, a lot's happening at one time, but I also don't want to be totally behind that we don't, we haven't built in time to accommodate new, new folks.
And I do appreciate, like you were, well, like everybody was saying earlier, you know, to have an opportunity for someone to do single-family homes, and I do like that people can choose, and, and yes, I hope that they choose a lot of ranch homes, because I, I, it makes me really sad when people have to downsize in Jamestown and they have to move outside somewhere else because there aren't enough appropriate houses for them here to live in that single-story type situation, so, you know, I'm, if, if it were just up to me, obviously, I would say just leave everything exactly like it is.
Right.
But that's my, that's my at-home feeling. Here is the councilperson feeling, and I, I do appreciate that we do have an opportunity here that then makes that space a single-family, whereas if we were to not do that down the road, maybe it would just be, you know, other types of housing that we do hear a lot of pushback for, so.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with the planning board that this is an appropriate land use, and I would make that into a motion to approve the rezoning of 5125 R1 Atwater Drive from agricultural to conditional zoning, single-family residential.
Second? Katie, I believe this is a roll call?
Yes. Councilmember Glanville?
Yes.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Yes.
Councilmember Burgess?
No.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Do I have a motion consistency from the council member?
Well, I'd make a motion that the proposed zoning request, 2025-01 regarding 5125 R1 Atwater Drive, parcel number 155994, be approved based on the following. The proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan of the town of Jamestown because the development facilitates growth in a manner that achieves the town's desired urban development pattern and quality of public infrastructure. The proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the parcel identified on our future land use map as suburban residential, and the proposed zoning amendment is reasonable because it is compatible with surrounding land uses in the area and supports development of compatible housing types. And the proposed zoning amendment is in the public interest because the development promotes single-family residential housing types that are compatible with the adjacent residential area, meeting the needs of the current and future community.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Jose, do you have more information to present concerning the annexation?
Yes.
All right. Under General Statute 160A-31, the town has received a petition for annexation of the property located at 5125 R1 Atwater Drive, west of Pine Tuck Drive. As first step, the town council directed the clerk to investigate the petition by adopting a resolution instructing her to do such. The clerk and the town attorney have investigated the petition and have found it to be sufficient, and a public hearing on this matter was scheduled for today. So on your packet, you have the certificate of sufficiency, resolution fixing a date for public hearing, and the annexation petition, and staff is just asking you to approve the annexation based on the rezoning.
Well, my, my questions were answered about, mine was the, the capacity and the storm water. Those were my concerns, which were answered, so I don't know if anyone else has any.
My only question that I didn't, it's neither here nor there, but I'm just curious, is this pilot elementary school district, does anyone know?
Not sure about school district, yet.
Okay.
I think so. That's fine. Anything?
Any other questions regarding the annexation petition?
Any questions at this time?
No.
Any questions for Mr. Granir?
Okay.
Seeing none, I will open the public hearing to anyone who would like to speak regarding the annexation request. Same rules as before, please come to the podium, state your name, address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, I'll return to council. Council, any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the ordinance extending the corporate limits of the town of Jamestown for the annexation of 5125 R1 Atwater Drive.
Second? On, it's a roll call also.
Yes. Councilmember Glanville?
Aye.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Aye.
Councilmember Burgess?
No.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask for a five-minute break, and then we will be back for the public hearing for the consideration of the adoption of the proposed budget. Back at... Thank you. Over gang. Okay. Matthew, you're up for the public hearing for the consideration of adoption of the proposed budget.
Good evening again, mayor and council, and to everyone who's joining us here and online. At the last budget meeting, I went through all of the numbers and the budget message. That is in the packet, at least if not in this one, it was in the previous one. You can read that again, but I'm not going to talk about those numbers again tonight. I did want to take a little bit of a different approach. I wanted to start by saying thank you, first to each of the members of the council, to all of our staff members, and to the residents who have shared their thoughts along the way. Putting together a budget is never just about numbers. It's about priorities, it's about people, and it's about making choices that move Jamestown forward without losing what makes us special. The truth is, Faith can attest to this, budgeting is part art, part experience, and then part number crunching. You need the data, our spreadsheets, projections, line items, but you also need perspective. That's the kind that comes from listening to our community, working with our staff, and anticipating where needs are headed before they show up in a budget request. And just as important, you need the ability to balance it all, because behind every decision is a trade-off, and behind every trade-off is a person, a program, or a place that matters. Now, what most people don't realize is that every line item in this document represents something real: a service, a sidewalk, a park bench, a police officer or firefighter, or a water line that supports daily life in our community. This isn't just a financial plan, it's a reflection of our values and the vision that we've set in our strategic plan. I'd like to share a little story with you. Just imagine, you're walking down Main Street on a crisp fall morning. You pass a freshly striped crosswalk. A Public Works truck rolls by, it's heading out to fix a water main before most people have even had their morning coffee. You make your way down East Fork Road over the new pedestrian bridge, and in the distance you hear laughter from the new accessible playground at Jamestown Park. Those are kids that are on a field trip from Hayneszenman Education Center who are thankful to have a place that they can play that's fully accessible to all. You circle up to the golf course and you notice golfers sitting on a bench donated by the Ragsdale or the Dalton family as they wait their turn at the tee in a serene setting that was carefully crafted by talented employees. Coming back into town, you catch a glimpse of the firefighters at Station 46 as they start their morning routine of inspecting the fire trucks. And as you finish your stroll, I stop in at the library to pick up a new book to enjoy. What most people don't realize is that those moments, the quiet, ordinary ones, are built on the back of the budget. Now, I know budget doesn't always sound very exciting. It sounds like spreadsheets and tax codes and line items, and yes, there's plenty of that. But here's the thing, the real reason that we take budgeting so seriously is because it touches real people every single day. Take Oakdale Road, you've probably driven on it a hundred times, but soon, thanks to careful planning and funding, there'll be a sidewalk there, making it safer for the mom pushing a stroller, students walking to school, or a neighbor taking their daily walk. That's not just infrastructure, that's impact. Or picture this, a senior who's lived in Jamestown for decades finds out that we're launching new programs that are designed just for them, things that they can be a part of, belong to, and enjoy. That's not just a program, that's community. Budgeting is knowing the numbers, that's for sure, but it's also knowing the needs, knowing what our citizens value and what they rely on even if they don't think about it every single day. We've planned for utility improvements, for fair pay for our staff, for a new fire station and street maintenance. We thought about how to maintain our golf course, our trails, our parks, not because they're flashy, but because they're part of the fabric of the town. But just imagine if we didn't, if we didn't plan for growth, for repairs, for opportunities, and that's why this matters. So when you hear about our $20 million budget, you should know, it's not just numbers on the page. It's kids playing at the ballpark, it's a water line that works when you turn on the faucet, it's a phone call answered when somebody needs help, it's Jamestown doing what we do, which is taking care of our people. The real reason behind this budget matters is because it keeps us balanced, fiscally, yes, but also in how we approach growth, stewardship, and service. We're maintaining a strong fund balance, we're investing in what matters: infrastructure, safety, walkability, and opportunities for every generation, from seniors to students to small business owners. And just imagine what this next year could bring with the pieces that poll in the place from our current plan: new sidewalks on Oakdale Road and East Main Street, restrooms at Red Miller Park that make our downtown more welcoming, senior programming that brings people together in new and meaningful ways, investment in our parks and recreation amenities for people of all abilities, steps toward preserving our history and thinking creatively about the future of Oakdale Cotton Mill, investment in our public safety through funding improvements at the fire department and renewing our contracts with the sheriff's office. But we're also continuing to support the people who carry out this work, our staff, by continuing to provide the staffing levels, training, and resources to help them be successful. Yes, there are rate adjustments in our utility system, there's a pass-through increase from Guilford County, which was approved by the Board of County Commissioners last week, for fire protection. But the thing you should know is that we've worked hard to hold the town's tax rate steady, and we're planning ahead for future infrastructure needs, using tools like a water and sewer rate study that puts transparency first. I'm proud of what this budget represents, it's not just responsibility, but resilience. It's not just maintenance, but momentum. What happens next is that this budget goes to work, it funds our sidewalks, equipment, services, and the people who keep our town moving forward every day. What happens next is that we take the priorities that you have shared as a council, like safety, connectivity, and quality of life, and turn them into action. What happens next is progress, not just planning for the future, but making it happen in ways that are thoughtful, responsible, and built to last. So tonight, I would like to ask a favor of you. I would like to ask that you make a commitment to the good works of our community, as I respectfully recommend the adoption of our fiscal year 2526 budget ordinance. It's a strong step toward the future that we're building together here in Jamestown. Happy to answer any questions. It is a public hearing that was continued from our last meeting, certainly if you have questions after the public speaks, be happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Matthew at this time?
John, here's the public.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will open the floor to the public. If anyone would like to speak about the proposed budget and the CIP, please come to the podium, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Dave Yarborough, I live at 404 Forest Dale Drive, and I'm here with some words from my friend and neighbor, Robert Frederick, who could not be here because he's celebrating his niece and nephew's high school graduation. I'm a proud resident of Jamestown who is deeply concerned about the property tax increase in the proposed budget being considered tonight in the public hearing. If you approve this proposed hearing, then Jamestown's property taxes will have gone up 35% since 2022. During that same time, three years, council has approved raises for the town manager that totaled 28%. Who else here in the room has gotten a 28% raise in 2022, since 2022? The proposed budget also includes hiring 10 new positions, a 33% increase in the town's staff in a single year. All that growth could be reasonable in a booming city, but Jamestown is a small town with a working, with working families, retirees, and residents on fixed incomes who are being asked to pay more and more. When residents must make tough choices, the town should too, and planning for the worst-case scenario might make sense for a business, but local government doesn't need to play it that safe. After all, the town has the law on its side to collect taxes which are consistently collected at nearly 100%. So you don't need to raise taxes again, assuming, even assuming if 2% of the people won't pay their property taxes as the budget proposes. You don't need to raise taxes to pay the additional amounts for contracted police and fire services as this budget proposes. After all, Jamestown already is collecting way more than it spends, and these yearly budget consistently overestimates expenses. As a result of overestimating these expenses and underestimating revenues year after year, Jamestown is currently sitting on over $5 million in unrestricted reserves, and the interest from all of this, all Jamestown's accounts is over $1,000 every single day. That is not planning, that is hoarding, and that is being done on the backs of residents, many of whom have already stretched, are already stretched thin. Jamestown is not a town made up entirely of millionaires, some of us are teachers, caregivers, hourly workers, and seniors who skip meals or medicine to pay utility bills, and utility bills are rising too under this new proposed budget. So we ask that you please do what is good, what good stewards do, use the funds we already pay wisely and compassionately. Jamestown deserves responsible governance, not more burdens.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Charles Hensel, I live at 109 Winrow Drive, and I'm actually responding to what I just heard. If indeed half of what he just indicated is true, in terms of the revenue and the money that's already been in the taxes, why would the council want to burden the residents with additional taxes that we're already paying for now? So, in essence, if half of it is true, if all of it is true, I think it would be a very unwise decision to go forward with the stated budget of $20 million, when the only thing I heard from this gentleman over here was primarily sidewalks. I understand sidewalks are important, and they provide a level of safety to your community for pedestrians and people to travel, but $20 million worth? I would ask that you give it a very serious, serious consideration before making a decision about this proposed budget.
Thank you.
Richard Clapp, 104 Newberry Street. I'm just gonna touch on one thing, I came up here before, I think about a month ago, and that's the GS, Guilford County Sheriff's Office contract. And I know, I was at the budget meeting, attorney was talking about their adding, wanted to add on about 29 or 26% more on the $500,000 contract. And I know the contract was signed in 1991, I wasn't here then, I'm a graduate of Ragsdale in '76, but I was in Alaska serving the Coast Guard at that time. I didn't even know until a couple of years ago that we had a contract, even though Jamestown residents pay Guilford County tax, so it seems like we're getting double-dipped even where the precinct 3 is right here. So I have an, I don't answer, so I have a relative that lives just outside the city town, limits, if she calls 911, she's probably gonna get the same response time as me, but I'm paying that extra in tax. That's all I have to say, but, and also, Oak Ridge and Pleasant Garden, like people have said before, don't pay for extra for the sheriffs, but we're the only town, small town in Guilford County that does. I believe it's time to cancel that contract and save some money for the Jamestown taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Steele, 101 Pierce Drive, mayor, town council. I'm just disappointed, that's really what I want to say. Last year, you guys spoke to each other up here, you all came to an agreement, I remember, that you were gonna look through the budget and seriously try to weed out some of the things and not bring another tax increase. But here we are, piggybacking again, three years, three years. So, I've only lived here, I think, four, and I enjoy it, I enjoy Jamestown, a lot of nice things like Matt read to us and all, but there's a breaking point, and you guys were stressing that the elderly people are paying the brunt, you know? So, and that's, that's a big concern for all of us, and all, it's not just me, you have to, you know, consider every one of the community and all. And I mean, it is, and we are well-funded, so we don't have to do this. That's, that's what I'm hearing, we have the reserves and things like that, so I do understand we, you know, I'm all, I'm all for a cost of living, a COLA raise for employees, I have no problem with that, and all, you know, that should be, that should be done. But I think that is a significant amount of money that, you know, with that dollar amount. You know, I said earlier, I have three businesses, and the way I do is because when I budget things, I have to stick to it and really have to compromise on a lot of things, and all. But one of the things I don't is, I do give my employees raises, but I don't, you know, I don't give away the, I can't give away the form because we have to do other things with the businesses, so I'm just asking, you know, I heard you last year, but I just, I'm not feeling it, okay? So, I just want to say I'm very disappointed, so, as a resident, so thank you.
Thank you.
I really didn't plan to do this twice. John Capes, 704 Neil Drive, Jamestown. A couple of things, first and foremost, I think that if something's important, you find a way, and if it's not, you find an excuse, and it seems like the person that loves to pull out a number or an item and say, "Look at this," and make a big deal about this, never seems to show up for the important moments, he has somebody come speak for him. I think that's a shame. But the bigger point I wanted to make here is very simple. Y'all have not actually said anything about raising taxes in Jamestown, you're not doing anything, the only thing that's coming through from a tax increase standpoint is called a pass-through. Now, y'all know that. I'm restating it for the simple reason that it tends to get glossed over by the boogaboob, we can say $20 million, we can say we have a cash reserve. The town doesn't run without a cash reserve, and we're dictated to by the state in terms of what that cash reserve needs to be, and if we don't, and we fall into default, then the town gets dissolved in terms of any local government, and nothing else gets done. And the question that comes up time and again that we're just, it pisses me off, I'm sorry. I mean, at the end of the day, you cannot, in good conscience, sit here and throw out, "Well, you're sitting on this much money, let's spend the money." That's what got us into $36 trillion in debt as a nation, is that type of logic, okay? It makes more sense to say, "Okay, let's, we are being fiscally responsible, this town has done a fantastic job, a fantastic job." Faith, you've done a fantastic job, but the council's done a fantastic job, the town employees have done a fantastic job, and you've done it by having good communication, putting everything out there to be read, and then very matter-of-fact about what it is that you're doing and how you're doing it. You don't get to just run a town and say, "Huzzah, we have a town." Yes, there's a $20 million budget, but guess what? That's what it takes to keep things at the level that they're at, and also to plan ahead for the future, and to look for things like, what are we gonna do with our fire department, which definitely needs some attention, and, and there's growth there? And, yeah, you can, you can go back and forth on certain nuances, you can talk about the sheriff department if you like, you can talk about other aspects of this town if you like, but you can't just pull one thing out there and say, "This is the reason that we suck," and it's just BS. And I'm this close to saying it, but I'm not. I just want to get the point across very simply as this, pass-through tax is not something that Jamestown does. It is not something that Jamestown does, this came from Guilford County, this came from High Point. We have an 8% ownership of water in High Point, so when water goes up and High Point wants to do something, we have to ride it out. If Guilford County decides, "Hey, we're gonna do XYZ," we have to ride it out, that's called a pass-through. And if you're watching, please figure that out. I'm sick of it, I am so sick of it, it is illogical, it doesn't make sense, and it's the same voice over and over again saying the same crap. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Greg Striver, I live at 100 Pierce Drive in Wood Eaton Hall. I will start by saying that I am not one of the people up here always complaining that was alluded to before, and that I am not someone that just sits there and denigrates stuff. I'm just saying that being in a city now that's gonna be one of the highest tax cities in the state, it's getting, starting to get out of hand. I mean, 10 new employees, I've heard it's supposed to be for the new development going in. Well, that's not this year, is it? Why does that have to be in this year's budget? Why not propose it when it is needed, not beforehand? I'm sure there's reasons why, but none of those have been given, so. And what I'm saying is, please consider that the budget can be whittled down, doesn't have to be taken as is given, and please look at that.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, I'll return to council.
Well, one thing, I'm not privy to the, whatever the formula or the calculation that's being used on some of these figures that are being commented on, so I just can't really say, although we've been working on the preliminary budget since, you know, the beginning of the year, and we are not proposing a tax increase.
Nor do we have 10 new positions.
Yeah, there is a 3% fire district tax increase that will be paid by all of the residents that are within the Pine Cross Sedgeville Fire District. The water sewer rates have increased because the partners that we buy water from have increased rates, and where we send our sewer to be treated at High Point, that's gone up, and, you know, so, so we do, as we always have done, is to pass through that increase to the users. Now, the town supplies the garbage, the recycling, the yard waste, we have not gone up on those fees, although, and I continue to say, I think taxpayers deserve to know a portion of their taxes go for that services, and I hope that always does be the case, because I think that's a reasonable expectation. There is the 3% COLA for the staff, which is, I think, pretty much the average for COLA increases for the state of North Carolina for the local government. There's 0% to 3% merit increase. There's 0% to 3% merit increase is approved. Now, at least when I worked, this was dependent upon my supervisor's evaluation of my job, and I may or may not have gotten 1, 2, or 3. It could have been 0, depending on how good I did that year. So that's a moving target onto what the supervisor gives to their employees in their department. I'm pleased that the town received a good audit, and that we have a healthy fund balance, and that we have low debt. So, and I made some suggestions about amendments to the budget I didn't like, or I thought could be changed over the last few months, some meetings, but the council members as a whole did not see the merit in those suggestions. So I'm in the spirit of cooperation. I'm comfortable with the proposed budget as it is.
Anyone have any other comments they'd like to make?
Yep, I'll make some comments. I first want to start off by saying thank you to all of the staff who has worked hard, and I do know that Faith has put in extra time, especially with the new system that she had to implement information in that I understand was very grueling. I'm very happy about the golf course. I did get a chance to meet a couple of people there a couple of weeks ago who came from Burlington, who was very complimentary. They love it. So that's definitely, I think, a plus to the town of Jamestown in addition to the park. What I'd like to say is, I am not, once again, supporting the budget again this year. And my vote will be basically, is based on accountability, on how we are allocating funds based on compensation in salary increases. And I know that I've talked about that to you guys before, so that shouldn't be a surprise. I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware of how I am voting. And like you, Martha, I do agree in the COLA, because it's justifiable and it makes sense to me. But when we start talking about merits and those kinds of things, I am not privy to what the other departments and what, so I don't know what they're giving. So that also makes it hard for me to vote on a budget based on compensation for other departments. I do feel that, from my research, that Jamestown is pretty generous as far as the compensation in salaries for our employees, and it is considered on the high end. So I'm going to say I would not vote for the budget based on that, because I just feel like I want to just give more thought about the residents and, you know, and just owe them some, a little bit more opportunity to feel that their voices are being heard and that they are concerned about compensation in how we are paying in the small town of 3,700 people. I can agree if it was at least 5,000, but not for me.
Thank you.
You know, first of all, I've said it in the budget hearings that we've had before. I do, you know, always want to bring up, we have had open budget hearings, several of them, starting in...
January.
January. And we've spoken about the budget at these council meetings as well. And so I know there's been the suggestion that we consider things and think about it, and I strongly feel we have been thinking about it since January. And so I do want to commend the staff for bringing us a balanced budget that did not have any suggested increases from Jamestown. Now granted, yes, there are pass-through increases, but I think that's something that is out of our control. But also, you know, as with going through the fire department, that's something that greatly benefits us, and we have not had an increase coming from there in several years. And so that's, you know, that's something that we do always hear about in listening to citizens throughout the year. And, you know, the ones who both come and speak at meetings, but also, you know, I think all of us make a great effort to talk to folks who don't come to meetings as well and see how they feel about things. And, you know, the fire department certainly is one of the top things that people do speak about and really feel comfortable with and love that we have, such a great one that we contract with, with the sheriff's department as well. Yes, we have had a lot of conversations about that. That's another thing that, you know, I have felt a certain way about, and I, you know, do appreciate and respect the folks that we have working with that contract and the deputies that we have who come to the meetings and that we work with in between the meetings, obviously. But that is one area where, again, reaching out to citizens, and also, we did a great citizen survey. We've kind of done a number of citizen surveys over the years, but citizens feel differently. And they, you know, even when we have tried to explain, you know, "We are paying this extra. We are the only small town that does that," the strong message I've gotten from the majority of citizens is, "Well, that's, we're getting what we paid for then. That's exactly what we want." They really love having what they feel like is that extra protection and that 24/7 coverage. And so I think, you know, when individually those of us have talked about changing that, we really looked at it again after speaking directly to citizens about that. And so again, I appreciate that the staff brought us a balanced budget, and so I am comfortable with that. And I feel like, you know, the meetings that we've had until this point, we've had ample opportunity to bring up concerns and make those changes, and, you know, I'm comfortable voting for it today.
Yeah, as everyone may remember, or maybe not, because I don't remember yesterday, so, but last year, I was very hesitant to vote for the budget because it was such a large tax increase we were imposing on our citizens. I did end up voting in favor of it, but it was pretty straightforward that if we were bringing another tax increase this year, I probably would not be voting for it. But because we are not, again, it's been said now many, many times, this is a pass-through that Guilford County is imposing, that I feel like, you know, again, Jamestown's not imposing a tax increase. The things that are in the budget can be covered without a tax increase from Jamestown. So I'm fairly comfortable with it. I too, as has been very public in meetings, that I too am also very concerned with the sheriff's contract. My understanding, and please someone correct me if I'm wrong, is that just because we passed this budget doesn't mean we're agreeing to that contract request from them, that that's still in negotiation. So, yeah, that's, I think, where I sit. I think that's all I have to say.
You know, I'd like to, please correct me. Nobody's talked about the, Commissioner Mike Causey had implemented a 7.5% homeowners insurance, which we haven't had anything to do with. I guess that's considered a pass-through too, but that was something else that, you know, I hadn't heard people talk about, but I read about it, and I was taking that into consideration as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, I did also want to say too, you know, the fund balance, and as has been pointed out, we do have requirements for maintaining a fund balance. That's a requirement by the state. I also do know that one of the big concerns in the town, at least from some folks, is our water quality. And we're going to have some huge expenses to ensure water quality in the future, so maintaining a strong fund balance, I think, is going to behoove us when we're having to pay upwards of $6 million, our portion, to make sure that we have clean water in this town, so, in the future, so.
And increase capacity, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so.
I just want to address a couple of things. Last year was very painful, but this council passed a budget that had a significant increase because they were looking toward the future. This council was also looking at a budget now that has no tax increase. That's called proper planning, okay? And you're correct, our fund balance does have to maintain a certain level per state regulations. And the last point I want to make is, there are no new, there are not 10 new positions being funded in this budget, and that continues to be out here, and it continues to be discussed, and we have tried to correct it over and over and over again. And I'm going to say it one more time, there are not 10 new positions. That's all I have to say about that.
Any further discussion, council? Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt the budget ordinance for fiscal year 2025-2026.
Second? Roll call.
Yep. Councilmember Glanville?
Aye.
Councilmember Rayburn?
Aye.
Councilmember Burgess?
No.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
The motion passes.
I am still waiting for the freshly striped crosswalks of the Oakdale sidewalk.
I knew you would be.
Do I have also a motion to approve the resolution adopting the capital improvement plan?
Yes, I'd make a motion.
Can I just ask something about that?
Sure.
I'm sorry. Where did I have that strategic plan? Now I've probably lost it. I can't be able to do it. The thing was, there was a couple, I was wondering, like the Citizens Academy, will that be an ongoing priority? I mean, can staff be able to maintain that every two years or every other year or something?
We're a little ahead.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Give me just a second.
Okay.
First, we need to, a motion to adopt the capital improvement.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Then we can get to strategic planning.
I did them all at the same time.
Okay.
So I make a motion to approve the resolution adopting a capital improvement program for fiscal years 2025-2026 to 2029-2030.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
No.
Okay. Now, Martha.
Now.
Matthew, did you have anything you wanted to say before we got to that, or just let Martha talk?
I'll address it. I'll be getting your questions.
Well, that was the one thing, was if staff is going to be able to, you know, continue that in some timeframe, every other year or something.
Yes. The short answer is yes. We have no intentions of letting that hard work go to waste. As you know, and we talked about earlier, council candidacy filing is coming up. We will be doing a condensed version of the Citizens Academy for anybody who signs up to run for council, including incumbents, if you wanted to participate. Our intentions are to give good information, just like the mayor said, we're not adding 10 positions, trying to educate folks before they run for council and try to, you know, become a candidate on a platform that doesn't really exist. So we will be doing that this fall. We feel like the Citizens Academy is probably better conducted in the fall, just because budget and everything that's going on, it's very stressful on all of the staff. It worked out that way this year because Deborah was with us, but I anticipate that this will be, at least in every other year, type of event, because we'll be doing the candidate sessions this fall.
And then I just had noticed on the infrastructure and facilities, we, and I guess this will change once this is updated, we still had provide heat to the civic center, bathrooms, which we now have, so I guess you'll take that off.
Yes, we will remove it.
I'm so thankful for that, after asking for 10 years.
Today especially.
So we could put that complaint right. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. No worries.
Would you like to add anything, Matthew?
No, I'm here for the next item when you're ready.
I'm ready.
All right. The council's strategic plan serves as a guiding framework for aligning the council's vision and operational goals, community priorities, and long-term investments. It was developed through a collaborative process, as you well know, involving all of the council's input, staff engagement, and community feedback. And the plan outlines our key focus areas, goals, and strategic initiatives intended to guide decision-making over the next three to five years. We have updated that for you and presented it as part of this budget process. If you have questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
I jumped the gun, or I got my questions.
Yes, and that is perfectly fine.
Did anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Well, I'd make a motion to adopt the update strategic plan for the town of Jamestown.
Second? On favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Katie, do we have anyone signed up for the public comment period?
Nobody signed up.
Any other business council?
I was just going to say, I don't know if other people got it or not, but get on your calendar, the 16th Annual Jamestown Pig Picking is going to be October the 3rd, on Friday. It'll be at Furnitureland South again, but you might want to get that on your calendar.
Okay. Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Second?
On favor?
Aye. Aye?
No. I'm going to just, I... All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.